I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on July 12, 2018. And can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to, can I get motion to amend the agenda? Oh, no, Aaron is going, Aaron Velcho is going to present items three and six A, so that's a little bit different, but can I get motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Are you amending it?
No, I guess, I guess it's for more information. Thank you.
But it's consented.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda and consent in agenda items. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is our public recognitions and presentations, Lacey History Month presentation by Aaron.
Thank you. Well, July is Lacey History Month, and I'm Erin Quinn Velcho, the Lacey Museum curator. So that's my life, all things Lacey history. So I'm delighted to be here today to talk to you about Lacey's history. So I wanted to share with you guys a couple of things that have been going on. We have made some major improvements to the Lacey Museum's website at lacymuseum.org. It's got a whole bunch of extra content that's been added to it and publications, and we're also the portal for the Thurston County Historical Journal Archives. And so there's a lot of great resources up there and links to our database, and so I'm really excited about that being upgraded. I also wanted to point out, if you haven't seen it, our new newsletter is out, there are copies over there, and you can let me know if anyone wants to be added to our email list. Get that business out of the way. The main thing that I wanted to share with you today is that we added a new staff member this year, a part-time museum assistant whose main focus is education, and her name is Marissa Merkel, and she is here today, and I'm going to have her come up. And as she comes up, I'll let you know that she is a museum professional. She is a native Washingtonian, born and raised. She has a Bachelor of Arts in History and Political Science from University of Oregon, and she has a Master's Degree in Material Culture and Artifacts Studies from the University of Glasgow, Scotland. She has been an absolute blessing and joy to work with. I am much happier having her here, helping me out. It's great. So, and she's also going to share with you some of what she's been working on and our plans for programming. We're really hoping to try some new stuff out to get ideas for what might work for the new museum facility, and she's got a lot of really great, fresh ideas, and I'm really excited to have you meet her. Marissa?
All right, well, thanks, everyone, for having me here, and thank you for giving me a position in this city. I've enjoyed all of you immensely so far. I don't want to get too heavy into it because I am full of ideas. As Aaron said, I am a museum educator, and for many years now, I've been taking information that some people might not necessarily find to be all that fascinating. History can be a yawn subject for a lot of people, so I like taking that information that I'm incredibly passionate about, and then passing that passion on to the local community. So previous to this, I worked as a civic education tour guide at the state Capitol over there. So those were three-hour tours. I don't know if any of you have taken them before, but man, they are long and definitely a yawn experience. After that, I was a tour guide with the tunneling project up there in Seattle, so I did tours around Big Bertha. That was also engineering, right? For some people, a yawn subject, but I enjoyed it a lot, and it was very controversial. So we had a lot of things going on in our day-to-day lives. So at this point, now arriving at the museum, I facilitated a lot of other people's programs. So here, I get the opportunity to start my own. So the first one we will be doing is story time at the museum. I will shamelessly plug this event. We have brochures over there. It is July 21 at noon. So we will be sharing some books that will have Washington State-centered, so the ABCs of Washington. We will also have ones that will highlight local history, so Lewis and Clark, things like that. After this, we plan to do the Historic Neighborhood Walking Tour, which has been done previously, so that's a pretty well-oiled machine. I'll just be making a few changes to that. And after that, when we have the new facility, one of our big ideas is to do traveling trunks, so traveling education trunks. I don't know if you folks have ever heard about these before, but they're very popular down at the Washington State History Museum. It allows you to have a small amount of space, which I'm sure some of you guys know you've been, we don't have a lot of space. So this allows us to pack a lot of material into a really tiny trunk, send it off, and those teachers can have that same museum experience, but off-site. So just a few ideas, like I said, I'm going to keep it short, otherwise we'll take up this whole meeting, just me talking about my ideas for the future. So I look forward to working with everyone here and making this city a better place and learning more about history. Thanks.
Just thank you, and help me welcome Marissa to the city.
Great, thank you, and I really look forward to all your ideas and all the great things, and looking forward to the Lacey Walking Tour as well. So next up is our Compassionate Community Recognition. Jenny?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is our Second Quarter Compassion is Contagious Recognition for 2018, and we're proud to recognize this organization from our community whose efforts have exemplified the true spirit of compassion in Lacey and throughout Thurston County. Our recognition award for the evening is for the team from Homes First. This group truly embodies the heart of compassion and what it means to serve their community. Homes First was formed in 1990 and grew out of a task force concerned about the homeless, whose members then joined with other community residents concerned about the problem with affordable housing. And Homes First now works hard to provide safe, healthy, and affordable rental homes to those who need them the most. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Marge Price and Amal Jerry to tell you more about their history and the outstanding programs and projects that they are currently managing.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here tonight. We're honored. You can speak to that.
We are, thank you so much. My name is Amal Jerry, Vice President of Board on behalf of the Board and our Executive Director, who couldn't be here. Thank you. This is a really wonderful honor to be here with you guys. Thank you.
I want to share with you why I think the City of Lacey should be sharing this award with us. I believe it was Trudy Sukup, our CEO, spoke with Scott and came to bear that there was a vacant house in really good shape, sitting on Lacey property with no one in it. And it's like, everything just rolled. It just was meant to be. Working with North Thurston School District and the City of Lacey, the house has been leased to us for a year. We typically do not, we do permanent brick-and-mortar, we typically don't do transition housing, but in this case, we saw an opportunity to take a homeless family of five and get them a place to live. They had been from Shelton, both of them worked, they thought they'd pack everything, go to California, get a better-paying job, get a better, I don't know where, why they thought they'd get cheaper rent, but anyway, they soon found out that they had to return home, and upon returning home, they were out of money. So they lived in their car for three months in the Fred Meyer parking lot, and then were able to get into a shared shelter space with the Family Support Center. And they lived there for the remainder, it was almost an entire year, with the three months, and then another eight to nine months. And this house came along, and our property manager took this family over there on a Friday, I think it was, and the little boy, there was no towels, there was nothing there, it was just an empty house, and the little boy was like crying, he says, "Can I take a bath?" He hadn't had a bath for a long time. Their shared shelter space meant they had to stand in line to use the bathroom, to use the shower, to use the kitchen. So, and it kind of was a trauma for those children, not having any private space. So I visited with them about a month ago. We were doing a videotape of the family that we used for our breakfast in September, and she just had tears in her eyes, and she said, "I don't ever want to be homeless again." And he's trying really hard to get work, she's got the three kids to look after, but on the living room wall, the only decoration was a certificate of perfect attendance for the eight-year-old. So they're, they can thrive and have a chance to succeed. You can't do that if you're living in a car or in a cramped shelter space. And, yes, she just had tears in her eyes, saying, she cries about, and actually, talking to our tenant navigator today, she says, "Yara cries about everything. We take her a new toilet," she cries. "We take her this," she cries, "but they are so thankful." And you don't always find that thankfulness in everybody. So out of our 225-plus tenants, the tenant navigator said this is one of our best tenants we've ever had. They pay their rent on time, they take care of their property, and the kids just love running in the, it's a fenced-in backyard. So it's a thank you to the City of Lacey for this family.
It is really my honor and privilege, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to present to Homes First the 2018 Compassionate is Contagious Recognition Award. Homes First is, obviously, this is a great success story that we had, we had a surplus house that we had bought the land, and we're not going to develop the property for a little bit, and so this opportunity came along, and Homes First has just been a perfect partner when it comes to that. So I love hearing that success story, but there are so many other success stories that Homes First has, and the fact that you're right here in Lacey and all the great work you're doing out of your own building is just truly remarkable. So on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of really the entire region, thank you so much for everything you do, and it's my honor to present you with this award.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is public comments of items not on the agenda, and we do have one person signed up, Rose.
Thank you, my name is Rose Gunderson. I'm a member of the Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. Instead of me talking, I want to introduce Fiona, one of our, another volunteer, to speak to you about some important news.
Hi, I wanted to let you know that we have upcoming meetings and events. Our first one is August 9, and it is regarding human trafficking and Washington Trafficking Prevention 101 Training. On September 13, there is hotel training advocacy meeting, and that is so community members can train hotel staff. And then on October 18, there is a hotelier training, and it is put on by BEST.
So, thank you. To explain a little bit, we are having a progressive schedule so that people will want to understand a little bit more about human trafficking, how it happens here, and how an organization is really about, our organization is really about community organizing, everyone can get involved. You don't have to be a counselor, you don't have to be law enforcement to make a difference. Actually, this is one of the important conditions of making real change. It's not policymakers, it's not law enforcement, it's us. So we want to invite anybody to come to that meeting, it's going to be right here in the community meeting, and that's why Fiona is part of us, because she wants to make a difference. The 13th, it's really about training advocates to go to hotels where you could invite them to send their staff to come to the October meeting to be trained, so that they can identify potential victims, identify signs, because it is happening right here in every hotel possible. The, we're really glad to have the partnership of not just business-ending slavery and trafficking, who's going to offer that professional training to hotels. The Olympia Visitor Bureau is partnering with us to host that event, so that their members will come, but we want every hotel to be there, we want every hotel staff to be there. So we hope that you could partner with us to promote this as well. Any questions?
And thank you, City of Lacey, for allowing us to use your building.
Okay, is there any questions? Okay, thank you for all the work you're doing, we really appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Next up on our agenda is the proclamation for Lacey History Month. As always, we'll get started, hopefully, with Councilmember Cox.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas in 1852, the area now known as the Lacey Historical Neighborhood was homesteaded by an industrious settler named Isaac Wood, who eventually became the first brewmaster in the territory north of the Columbia River, and provided the inspiration for Lacey's original name of Woodland, and?
Whereas by 1891, the Northern Pacific Railroad added a rail line through the growing community, which now boasted a silky racing track, hotel, train depot, school district, platted subdivision, and post office, and?
Whereas in 1891, a post office was established with the unique name of Lacey to avoid confusion with another town in the state.
Whereas in 1895, St. Martin's College opened its doors, and on its campus in 1922, KGY Radio received one of the earliest radio licenses in the state of Washington, and?
Whereas by the 1920s, with the advent of the automobile, Lacey became well-known as a resort community over time, featuring 19 lakeside resorts offering swimming, diving, roller skating, dancing, and exciting water shoots, and?
Whereas the City of Lacey, through a vote of its residents, was incorporated on December 5, 1966. And whereas Lacey's Historical Commission, Historical Society, City Council, and residents recognize the significance of our community heritage, and?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2018 as Lacey History Month. And further, I encourage all citizens to join me in discovering and celebrating Lacey's 166 years of history during this month of July and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, July 12, 2018. Thank you, and I'll give this to?
Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Sure, sure.
Well, good evening, members of the council, and Mayor Ryder. My name is Eric Ebel, I'm the Chair of the Lacey Historical Commission, and here we are again, it's July, another July, and another Lacey History Month. I am proud to be the Chair of the Lacey Historical Commission. We've done some great work since, at least since I've been on board, and I'm sure we did great work before, too. It has, it has really been an honor to serve the city in this role, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city in this role as we move forward on our exciting new project of the museum, of course. I do want to say that this proclamation hit the nail on the head. I mean, every single one of these line items is absolutely the reason why we look at the City of Lacey as such a unique and wonderful place, with a history that is surprising and fascinating and unexpected, when you think of just a little town that used to be a suburb of Olympia, and it has these amazing aspects to it. And I think that with the new museum coming, we are really going to be able to share that story with more and more people, and help educate people in the South Sound, people in Washington State, and with any luck, people all over the country, about what a unique place it is to be in Lacey. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up on our agenda is resolutions. The first one is the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, the Six-Year TIP, and there's Martin.
Good evening. Tonight, we're recommending approval of the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, and the traffic mitigation list that we collect mitigation for. The city is required to submit the TIP annually to TRPC and the state. The primary purpose of the TIP is really just a checkbook to identify grants that we've received and the dollar amounts associated with them. They must be consistent with the transportation plan. This year, we're recommending adding one new project, the Super T overlay on, we got the grant last year for paving Yum Highway from Ruddle Road to basically City Limits in the Indian Summer, and College Street from 37th to Yum Highway. So it's a good paver there. And we're removing a project, 31st Avenue, which is under construction right now with the IDS project. The mitigation list identifies projects that we collect traffic mitigation for. This year, we're not changing any of the projects, but the inflation rate was 3%, so we corrected that and inflated it by 3%. Other than that, I have no other items. Any questions?
Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the proposed 2018 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program TIP and the Transportation Improvement Mitigation List.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is our Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Targets. We are operating with a very short bench tonight, so, yeah, Rick, I guess you're up.
Yes, and tonight, Mayor and City Council, before you is a resolution to adopt regional long-term carbon emission reduction targets in a common baseline year. This resolution is born out of inter-jurisdictional effort that started this past April. The council members entered into an inter-local agreement with the cities of Olympia, Tomwater, and Thurston County to start looking at a regional approach to developing a climate action plan. And the reason why this effort has started is because each jurisdiction has different components, and it is now time to see, look at, have some consistency amongst of those various plans and efforts that have been undertaken by their, by our sister jurisdictions. And with the City of Lacey, we've had the CR2 plan as an example, and that was adopted back in 2009, and it set 2020 as our target year for our goals to achieve, and of course, 2020 is right around the corner, so it's now time to update that plan, and this provides a great venue to do so. So to start this inter-jurisdictional effort, started out with a Phase One and a Phase Two, and we're in the midst of Phase One, and the purpose of Phase One was, again, to develop base, a baseline between the jurisdictions, because everybody's at a different spot, we want to get a common ground to start from, and then also set common targets, and this is what this resolution tonight will, will do. So everybody's shooting for the same horizon years and target carbon footprint reductions. And then part of that Phase One, which will come at a next, a future council meeting, is developing a Phase Two scope of work based off of those common targets, and that'll be probably at least a year-long effort to develop the actual climate action plan of how we're going to achieve, pretty roadmap of how we're going to achieve those targets. So to wrap up, the, the common targets that is going to be established would be a 45% carbon reduction by 2030, and 85% by 2050. And these targets come from, are based off of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and the Paris Agreement, and some scientific studies that to effectively change actions of climate change, got to maintain, try to reach a 2 degrees Celsius target. And so with these goals going forward, they are very, they're mighty goals, but they're also, as time goes on, new technologies come on place, and these are things to shoot for as we work towards climate reduction, or, excuse me, carbon reduction footprint. So with that, happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
I, I move that we approve the resolution adopting regional long-term carbon emission reduction targets in a common baseline year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Councilmember?
So although I will vote for this and am in support, I do have some concerns that I do want to point out. Excuse me. I really, my big concern is that I do not believe that the goals set forth are attainable. I don't believe the city or any of our partner jurisdictions control enough of the factors to actually have the impact to have this kind of reduction. So I just, I find it to be, I really appreciate all the work that was done, but I find the goals to be somewhat unrealistic. With that said, I will still vote for it, there's no negative to voting for it, and it does give us goals to strive for, even though I don't believe they are attainable.
Fair enough. Councilmember?
So as a part of my professional, my professional marketing projects over the last three years or so, I've had the, the reason to study this quite extensively, done several presentations in several cities in California and Colorado, and the intent of this ordinance for the city is good, and I think all hearts are in the right place, for sure. I don't think it hurts, but the actual ordinance is, you know, based on science, it really isn't explained, and it's all about, in this ordinance, about carbon. In my experience and studies, the real culprit to greenhouse gases is methane. 67%, 67 times more potent as a greenhouse gas and capture than carbon dioxide. And we don't have time to go into the science and play Bill Nye the Science Guy here, and then, but I just wanted to point that out, that that's an issue with me, so I can't really, really support this ordinance as written, because I'm just a stickler for the science on it. And if anybody wants to hear more about it, let me know, it's kind of interesting. So I won't vote for the ordinance, but I'll be supporting. Well, the other point, it talks about carbon dioxide. Yeah, carbon dioxide is a greenhouse gas. I'm against the burning of ancient carbon, which is carbon that's really meant to be in the ground, coal, oil, that kind of a thing. And there's a differentiation, because there is such a thing as the burning of new carbon, which is already in the atmosphere, and so it's already a net zero. And so I think that should be explained more in the lexicon of our country and the world, but we'll see. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to approve this resolution adopting regional long-term carbon emission reduction targets as a, and a common baseline year. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is resolution to rescind Resolution 940 and 1037 for sole source programming and software. Dave, you want to explain that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I certainly will explain that. So as noted, the final resolution before you is a resolution that would rescind two previous resolutions that have been adopted by this council. Both of those previous resolutions relate to the city's SCADA system. So that's the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System that the city utilizes as part of its bigger water utility. Technical Systems Incorporated, TSI, is the company that designed and originally implemented this system, and in 2008, when the council adopted Resolution 940, it did so because TSI at that time was clearly and legitimately the sole source for services related to that system. Subsequently, in 2016, council adopted Resolution 1037, which renewed Resolution 940. Presently, there's other sources available for services related to the city's SCADA system. I'd have to, I mean, I'm an attorney, right, so I'm going to defer to Public Works personnel for, you know, who those, why that might be, or who those might be, but the bottom line is, there's multiple sources. As such, it's no longer appropriate that TSI be sole sourced. As such, it's no longer appropriate that TSI be sole sourced. So this resolution does nothing more than rescinds those previous resolutions, declaring TSI to be a sole source. It would put those services, I think what would happen is the public, the city would put out for a...
RFQ.
Yeah, for RFQ for, for an engineer, and then, you know, hire the most qualified personnel for that, for that work. So the recommendation is that council move to approve this resolution rescinding those prior resolutions.
Move to approve Resolution rescinding Resolutions 940 and 1037, which declared Technical Systems Inc. to be a sole source for SCADA programming and software.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve this resolution rescinding the other resolutions declaring sole source for SCADA programming and software.
Just one little quick thing, and I'm already pretty sure of the answer, but that doesn't stop Technical Systems from bidding, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So the first resolution was signed by Mayor Graham Sacerson in August 2018, nearly 10 years ago.
Right dogs, yeah.
A lot can happen in 10 years, so I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. And now, we're on to the mayor's report. And before I get started, I just want to bring back greetings from Lacey's sister city in Poland, Minsk Maszewski. I was just back there representing Lacey at a major music festival that our sister city puts on with our hometown local talent, Ethan Tucker, Lacey product, went over there and performed at the music festival, and it was very successful, and he was very well accepted, and they've already invited him back for another year. And so we'll see how that goes. It was a lot of fun, and I really appreciate all the, the great relationship we have with Lacey Sister City in Poland and, and their sister city association, which is MILA, which is the Minsk Maszewski Lacey Sister City Association. And matter of fact, while I was there, MILA had students here in Lacey that were participating in a, a program that, in association with St. Martin's College, South Sound Community College, and Evergreen, where students came over and were able to participate in some, some activities between those three colleges, and that was very successful. And so there's ongoing talks between our, our two associations, and I look forward to a continued great relationship with our sister city. So with that being said, my other point of business tonight is to recommend the reappointment of Chris Light to the PFD board. And so this is something that's required through the, through the, I guess, the bylaws of the, the district. We've actually, this should have happened a little bit sooner than it did now. This has been open for a bit, but we had to go out to the, it had to be approved by the other jurisdictions as well. And so we actually sort of took the lead on, on making sure that had happened. There was a, a, a motion in a second that was done through the mayors, through, I think it was at a mayor's forum, and then they then took it back to their different councils. And so now it's before us as well. So this would be a, I would move that we reappoint Chris Light to the PFD board.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to reappoint Chris Light to the PFD board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chris.
So next up is the city manager's report. You got something for us?
Honorable Mayor, I have no report. Thank you.
Then, then next up is the standing general committees. First up is the community relations committee, Councilmember Stedman.
Yes, let's see here. Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee met on June 4th, 2018. Present, we're myself, Councilmember Young, and Councilmember Cox. We had the new summer event presented to us by the Parks and Recs Department, and the Park and Recs Department will be hosting a new movie night event at Long Lake on Friday, July 13th.
Tomorrow?
Yep, tomorrow. Kind of short notice, but, and it'll be showing the movie's jaws on a 20-foot inflatable screen. Staff are expecting about 110 attendees, and there'll be a $5 admission charge to offset the cost of hosting the event. Parents are required for any children under the age of 16, or 16 and younger, and staff reserve the Thurston County Fairgrounds parking lot where attendees can enter the park through the side gate and park the cart vehicles there. Lacey Police Officers Explorers will be out there assisting the, the parking, and there will be no swimming after 7:00 PM or during the movie. Local neighbors in the area were notified during the trial run and are supportive of the event and did not notice any extra noise. Park staff purchased inflatable screen two years ago and planned to use it for more events, and Councilmember Cox suggested a discounted rate for families with multiple young children for lower-income families. Next, on the, I don't, next on the agenda was the update of 3rd of July fireworks spectacular, which happened on Tuesday, July 3rd, from 4:00 to 11:00. I know many of us attended that event. It was awesome to see the park full. I don't know how many people were there, but I guesstimate there was at least 15,000, and all the food vendors and everything probably had 100 people in line at least, and everybody talked to had a great time. Let's see here. So the event was previously hosted by Public Affairs and is now hosted by the Parks and Recs Department. The event includes face painting, food vendors, activities, and free kids zone and more. There will be an Olympic, there was an Olympic-themed trampoline show for 20 minutes at a time. They would have skis and snowboards and perform their acts during music. And the Olsen Brothers Band and Fanatics were there. Fireworks were provided by Western Display, and will be synced to music for, for a 20-minute fireworks show, which was like amazing to watch. It was, it was great. I did also go to the Tomwater fireworks show on the 4th, the very next day, and they had over 12,000 people there. Was right before the fireworks started there, and the official count at that point, it just went over 12,000. And their fireworks show was great, too. And they're very similar, but you know, of course, I'm biased to Lacey. But it was great to see people out in the community, and that's what it's all about. So this year, intercity transit provided free rides to customers who say they're going to 3rd of July event. Intercity transit, transit also provided transportation, transportation following fireworks show from Rayner Vista to Kamatchan Middle School, Timberland High School, and Lakes Elementary. Parking was very limited, of course, and because it's a successful event. And there were some concerns about parking in the neighborhood, but from what I heard, everything was as well-received as possible, and everybody enjoyed themselves immensely. And this is just one of those events that, as a council member, and a father and a husband, and resident of Lacey, just makes me swell up with pride. I just love it. So that is my report.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Next up is the transportation committee. Councilmember Hearn.
Mine's not as emotive. It's transportation. It's mobile, though. The city has to do a six-year transportation improvement program. We call it a TIP. That's a fun thing to say. The city is required to prepare a transportation improvement plan every year and submit it to the Washington State Department of Transportation and Thurston Regional Planning Council by July 31. The TIP will allow the city to comply with state regulations and apply for grants on specific projects. The only new project this year will be the College Street, well, this was already kind of discussed.
Yeah, we just did this. We just did that.
We're good. Now, the next thing we talked about was the annual transportation benefit district report. And the transportation benefit district, TBD, was formed by council in January of 2016 in ordinance 1485. Last year, Lacey residents approved Proposition 1 by 62% in order to fund street and sidewalk repair and reconstruction. The city began collecting funds from TBD July 1, 2017, and then from my recollection, too, this was sorely needed, because we'd missed a couple years of, of needed funding for maintenance, and we all know that maintenance, preventative maintenance saves the money, the city taxpayers a lot of money down the, down the road, and that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Next up is the land use committee. Councilmember Cox.
Okay. Land use committee met on June 26th, and it was a very full meeting. Ryan Andrews gave us a presentation or a briefing on the Depot District sub-area plan. The plan is currently under review by city staff and will come to a joint work session of the council and the city's planning committee, commission on August 2nd. This work has come out of a series of public meetings dating back into February, and then an open house in May, where community members were invited to come in and share their feelings about how the Depot District might be reshaped. The most popular of the ideas was to take advantage of St. Martin's University and have it, have, work in partnership with the university, so it has a little bit more presence along Pacific there. We have more interconnectivity between Pacific and Lacey Boulevard. We have some, maybe some traffic slowing a little bit in places. There's, there's lots of different things that can be done, but I'm looking forward to this session on the 2nd. We also received a briefing from Jessica Brandt on affordable housing and looked at the various types of housing demands for social housing, everything from emergency shelters, transitional housing, workforce housing, affordable rental and homeownership housing. According to the point in time census count, there are 828 residents in Thurston County without permanent housing. However, we know that numbers, you know, that's a point in time. That's how many people they could find that day. We know that there are many more. Just looking at the North Thurston Public School District, they reported 928 students without permanent housing. So it was, it was, it was an interesting overview of the situation. Councilmember Greenstein mentioned that Horizon Point Homeowners Association has seen a decrease in housing rentals during a discussion of the shrinking market and the exorbitant rates that are being charged now for rent. And then finally, there was a presentation on the proposed Panorama Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone application. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this on May 15th, and then they voted at their June 19th meeting by a vote of 4 to 2 to recommend approval to the council. There were a number of, there's a lot of interest in it. There's a lot of concern around, around the neighborhood. However, balancing that interest is the city's need to have urban infill, and the planning commission basically felt that in order to start accommodating the 30,000 new residents that we're expecting over the next two decades, that we're going to have to have denser urban settings. So the feeling on, among the majority of planning commissioners was that the proposal meets the requis, requisites that there, the city has design standards that would ease the transition into the neighborhood. And the only other thing I wanted to add on that is that Councilmember Greenstein and myself, who were the only two at our meeting that day, suggested that the council, full council, consider perhaps having another hearing and inviting Panorama and Concerned Neighbors back in for one more talk. I'm sure you've probably seen the front page article in the Olympian and now the more recent editorial. So it's, it's not just one little group of unhappy neighbors. This is attracting a lot of attention, so.
So Rick, can you give us an update on the process here?
Yes, this is a legislative process, so we're, the city is statually required to hold one public, at least one public hearing, which the planning commission did in their capacity. With the recommendation going for the council, we got a tendency to schedule for August 16th work session for briefing, and then we'd schedule it for a follow-up council meeting for, for action. The council would have the opportunity, because it is a legislative matter, you could have a, take in public comment at the, at the council meeting at that point in time on, at the council's discretion. And if, you know, this, we can advertise, we'll definitely let the interested parties, parties of record know of the schedules as they could move forward through the council's review of the project.
So that's coming up in a work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, the first would be a work session, and then for act, for action, we would have to have it at a, at a council meeting, regular council meeting in September.
Councilmember.
A couple of quick things I just want to clarify on this, too. Although we did receive a lot of input, we've received quite a bit of written, you know, comment on this, a lot of it, I believe, is based in some misconceptions, which is why I feel pretty strongly that a second public hearing in front of council would make sense, having representatives from Panorama there as well to kind of talk a little bit more about what they're doing. When you look at most of the comments that we got in, they, they relate to two primary things. One, the idea of an 80-foot high building, which in reality, although the zoning may allow for that, that, that is, there's no proposal, and nothing that Panorama's talked about has been, is actually an 80-foot building. And the second thing was mostly regarding traffic, and our own traffic study shows that there's no significant change to the amount of traffic as opposed to the mobile home park that was there previously. So I think there's a lot of misconception. I think it would be good to be able to clarify that with those people who have an interest.
I do want to mention that I will not be here during that work session. My nephew's graduating from Marine Corps boot camp, and I'll be in San Diego, California during that time.
Okay. Well, I, I do think, one way or the other, there's going to be some more discussion about this before we get to final action. And it's, it's always difficult, especially on something that can be now is on the paper, and there's a lot, as councilmember just pointed out, there's a lot of misconceptions about what's being proposed, and one of the reasons is because we don't actually have a proposal in front of us that is going to show what the final product's going to look like, because they haven't gotten there yet. So I look forward to having a further discussion about this in a work session, but I, I would concur. I think we need to probably invite Panorama and probably have either a public hearing or something else to sort of discuss what this could look like and, you know, and have some more discussion along those lines, so, for all concerned. Because I think this could be a great project for all concerned, as long as we can get over the hump of what is and what's not going to happen, so.
You want to go first, Jason?
I have a question that's not related to this topic, so.
Okay, then, Councilmember.
I appreciate that sentiment, and I just, you know, where I've been coming from all along in this process is that this is the first big infill in an entirely residential area, and there's a whole lot of concern about it, and I just think we need to do due diligence in working with the neighbors, working with Panorama, and do everything we possibly can to see that this project is done right, because it is going to set the tone for future development to come. And, you know, if we can make, or help make this go well, then I think our Lacey residents are going to embrace more infill projects with a little more welcoming attitude than might if this goes badly.
Yeah, I agree.
So I don't think it's the first. We've had others, and we've had problems, but go ahead, Rick.
One thing, too, I want to add is, is just as a general reminder to the council, that the planning commission has spent a lot of work and time on this and developing a record. And so they've looked at this issue several meetings, they've had the public testimony, there's been a lot of feedback with the community. And so going forward, anyway, I would suggest that maybe look at the work session as the opportunity to review the record, and then at the next... to review the record, and then at the next meeting, then have some public dialogue as a way to maybe accomplish that goal so people have the opportunity to address you. But again, it's one of those situations is, are there, with this type of proposal, are there adequate safeguards within the implementation ordinances to deal with compatibility issues and those concerns raised? And that's kind of where the question lies. And so depending on whether you're upset with the decision or have, you know, other things, you know, it's one way or the other, there's that process that, as we go through with me knowing these land use issues can be kind of controversial and messy, but I would just want to remind the council that there is that record developed by the Planning Commission, and they held that public hearing and worked really hard and discussed it fairly well.
Great. I agree. Yep. Councilmember?
So a point of clarification, please, on the comment about less rentals in Horizon Point. Was that there's less rentals available or less renters? Or what was the deal on that?
Would you like to do that?
So what we've seen over the last year, 18 months, is as the market has changed and the housing market has been, you know, pretty strong, we're seeing a lot of those that were rentals now being sold. So during the downturn in the economy, a lot of that neighborhood, probably close, right around 50% actually, were rentals. As housing prices have gone up and people are able to get their money out of them now, many of those rentals are turning over and, and they're now, you know, new owners buying them and living in them.
So less rentals available?
Less rentals available. And I've talked to some of the property managers in the area, and they, they've seen it absolutely happening in there. We think we've actually gone over the last two years from 50% rentals to under 30. I mean, it's been a thing. It can't change.
So it's tougher for people to rent?
Yeah, very tough.
And I'd add to it also, when those houses are sold, a lot of the residents or a certain small percentage of them are of low income or Section 8 or whatever. And when those houses are sold, they have to basically leave. So then they get put into the, you know, the waiting list for another place to come along. So, you know, it affects the nonprofit area also, and the, and the low income, the most vulnerable, you know. And when we're, when we're dealing with homeless crisis and trying to prevent people from becoming homeless, that's a huge factor.
Yep, I agree. Is there any other discussion? Well, thank you for the land use report. So next, we're on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm at first, but I do not have any report, so Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so the Joint Animal Services Commission didn't meet in July. LOT met July 11th yesterday. And for our work session, a board staff and two members of our technical subcommittee, which is Rich Hoy and Olympia, who's the Olympia Public Works Director, and Scott Edgar, our Public Works Director, and his daughter, were given a tour of upcoming construction projects. And these included the occupied space improvements. I love what these are. So sludge, de-watering system upgrade, ultraviolet disinfection upgrades, and biological process improvements. So it was a really interesting tour, and what that showed was how you could change things and be more efficient and definitely more energy efficient. So the, for the business meeting, the board approved the following actions. And one was, again, the Occupied Space Improvements Construction Contract to Scott Wall Construction of Olympia for $1.5 million, and that included state tax, of course. And then the Occupied Space Improvements Construction Support Contract for, to KBMB Architects for $139,000. And again, the advantage of this, it will save 22% in energy efficiency. And then it reduces the footprint significantly and be cost-effective with newer, better functioning equipment. And those areas that are being replaced haven't been updated since the early 18, 1900s, 1980, 80s, I'm sorry. It wasn't back in the long century. So 1980s, and have outlived their equipment life expectancy, plus making the area more safe and freeing up areas for other upgrades. The other thing we approved was the Water Conservation Coordination Five-Year Plan, so from 2019 to 2024. And this coordination plan has been, conservation plan has been in place for a number of years. This is the next five-year plan. And LOT coordinates with the three jurisdictions, so Lacey, to furnish low-flow residential and commercial equipment such as toilets, showerheads, or business equipment such as ice machines, et cetera. And this reduces flows to the system. It delays need for new capacity and helps partners, helps partners stretch water supplies and make wise use of a precious resource. So that was great. And then we just had an update on the Biosolids Management Program. And that's my report for LOT. Olympia Region Clean Air Agency met also July 11th in the morning, and we had an update of, on the regulatory rule that's being, going through process. And basically, this just reorganizes categories, putting them in alignment with the other air agencies in Washington. It, it doesn't do anything new in practice. So mostly clarifications and consistency with other agencies. We had a presentation on the next iteration of the strategic plan, which will lead the agency for the next five years, and that will come back to us. ORCA lost an inspector for the compliance program, so they are being interviewing to replace that staff person next week. I'm not sure where he went. I think he went to work for Ecology. Air quality at Mountain View Site for June 20, had 27 good days. The missing three days were due to instrument malfunction. And this is the ozone season, so Lacey Site is remarkably similar to the monitor at Yelm, which is run by Ecology. And what the monitor shows is spikes in the ozone levels during warm days, which is getting more frequent. For the Community Toxics Grant, the equipment is now set up again at Mountain View to monitor additional air toxics. And the fire season burn ban in Thurston County starts July 15th. And you can actually go onsite, ORCA's website, to look at different burn bans across the six counties, since ORCA is the administrator of the site. And let me see.
So the burn bans can be county-wide, start on July 15th?
Yes.
Outdoor burns?
Outdoor burns, yeah, yeah. And this is kind of based on DNR thing. Other counties kind of start actually earlier, but, so it'd be helpful to have it all start at the same time, but right now Thurston is July 15th.
And then the news reported that several started today.
Yeah, I think they did. Kitsap County and some others. And for our six counties, which is, you know, Jefferson, Watcom, Mason, Pacific, that kind of thing, I think it fluctuates. It's not consistent. Let me see. Okay, the executive director reported that a number of federal items that affect ORCA because of, it will not, they won't know the outcome of it because those decisions by EPA is in the court, so we're waiting for that to go through the court system. And lastly, which is great, there is no August meeting. Yay. So that's my report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next up is Councilmember Young.
Hi. So the EDC had a great meeting on June 25th, and one of the exciting things that we were briefed about was a grant proposal that the EDC submitted to the federal government. If this program is approved, it would create a Center for Innovation and Technology Transfer at the EDC. The resulting program would create a center of highly-placed technical assistance that would act as a catalyst for small business to gain access to and win awards with the federal government for research and development projects and contracts. This is a national program with only 24 awards provided in the entire nation, with only one per state. The Washington State Governor Jay Inslee has endorsed the EDC's proposal, and the EDC secured the partnership commitment from U-Dub, WSU, Washington Clean Tech Alliance, U of Dub Center for Innovation, Washington State Small Business Development Network. And then the Thurston Community Economic Alliance Recruitment Efforts briefed us on an outline, overview, and report on efforts to recruit a specific industry under the category of natural products, with our region being positioned as the hub for natural products manufacturing. The EDC staff has researched the economic impacts of this sector and identified that the sector currently has a major economic impact upon the local economy. The effort will culminate with the participation in September at a natural products expo held in Baltimore. The EDC created a partnership with five local significant companies to participate and support the efforts at the expo. And then we were briefed on the Lacey Veterans Micro Enterprise Program, which is funded in part by federal community development block grant and is designed to help eligible veterans living in Thurston County successfully plan, open, and operate their own business within the city of Lacey. And so we were pleased to hear that there's been 88 inquiries and 13 qualified and have went through the training. And once you go through the training, you're eligible for a grant in between $500 and $25,000. And then lastly, the South Sound Real Estate Forum is coming up on September 27th. It'll be at the Hotel RL, as it was last year, from 11:00 to 1:00. So that's my report on the EDC. And then the Health and Human Services Council, we had a CIP meeting on Monday, and the United Way voiced their desire to no longer co-mingle their dollars with the CIP and with the city and the counties. So we'll be looking at a different model after 2020, but we're about to start the calendar year for 2019 and that new funding cycle, so no changes will be made until 2020. And then Thurston Thrives met, and the Community Schools Initiative gave a presentation on their success stories. So that's the Tomwater School Program and the one in Yelm as well. And they updated on their expansion efforts and their, their goals and everything. And then the August 20th Thurston Thrives meeting, we're excited because Denny Heck will be, be there, will be coming there and talking about his affordable housing work and learning more about what Thurston Thrives does. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
Emergency Medical Services and Thurston County Law and Justice both meet next week, but Thurston, TCOM 911 did meet yesterday. Lenty meeting, but there's a couple of things from the agenda that I do want to talk a little bit about. First, we held a public hearing to discuss our non-member fees. You've heard me talk about this for, oh, I don't know, about two years now? Well, finally done. We actually came up with a plan. We had a public hearing on it. No one made any comment. We also received no written comment. There were a couple of affected people there, but they had no comment. They were just there for, to hear what we had to say. After the hearing was completed, it was unanimously approved to start, to set the new fees for all of the non-members. So I can get in, I won't get into the detail, but if you want to see it, I have all the detail of what all of the different organizations that use the dispatch system will be paying. Some went up, some went down, but the overall number didn't change. So the total revenue stays the same. It's just much more evenly and fairly distributed. There were some serious issues with the way it was set up before.
Yeah. And how, how'd it go overall? Did the, did they understand?
Again, we had, we got no comment at all, which we were somewhat surprised. The last time this was even looked at, they had pretty much a full house.
Sure.
This time, no one showed up, and we sent out the full packet to every organization that uses it, including all the tow companies and everyone, and we received no comment. I don't know that that means we won't.
Yeah.
There's still, the next step will be now that we've implemented it for, and it'll start with next budget cycle, so next year. When they receive their bill, those that go up are likely to then decide it's time to make some comment. Unfortunately, they will have missed their opportunity to actually make comment. You know, the reality is, just as an example, the tow companies, the way it was set up before, every tow company paid the same, whether they were on the list for one city or every city and the county, regardless of how many trucks they had or how many different entities they had, they all paid the same. There was, there was no fairness to that when you think about a tow company that maybe does business in Lacey but doesn't do business in Olympia, Tomwater, or the county, and another company who is on all of those lists, so getting a lot more tow dispatch, paying the exact same amount, made absolutely no sense. So it's a much more fair system now, I believe. So, but again, they had no comment. We'll, we'll see how it goes when they actually receive bills next year. That could change it. The other major topic of conversation, again, it's something I've been talking about for a little while, is the public safety radio system. So we held a meeting, and Chief was there as well. We held a meeting with our legislative representatives. So we had representatives from the 22nd, the 2nd, the 20th, and the 35th. So all of the, all of legislative districts that touch Thurston County were represented at the meeting. I had a very good discussion. They seemed to understand the situation, understand the need. They had, I wouldn't say that they were all in total support of how to fund that, but they had some different ideas and different concepts. I think, I think we made some pretty good progress, and there's some additional meetings scheduled. One of those representatives, Dan Griffey from the 35th, is actually a firefighter, so understood the situation probably better than most. It winds up that this is not a unique problem to Thurston County. This is absolutely a statewide problem. Mason County, where he works, has the exact same radio communication issues. So in, in the big picture, it looks like there will have to be some statewide, you know, solutions. But in the shorter term, for our solutions, the one thing that was somewhat overriding from all of the legislators was that they all believe we need to be in partnership in one way or another with the state, with the state patrol. They believe that they are much more able to give us support if, in fact, we are in partnership with the state. So we're looking at the options, and I think, I think it was, it was a good meeting, though. Chief, anything you want to add from that meeting?
No, just appreciate the support, and it is an issue, you know, interoperability and communication since 9/11 has been a big topic nationwide, so we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, and it really is a critical situation. There's parts of the county where the radio systems just don't work, you know, where police and/or fire could be out on a call and not be able to communicate and get the help they may need. And it's just a dangerous situation, both for our law enforcement and firefighters, but also for the public. So it's something we are going to have to resolve, without a doubt. And unfortunately, it's, it's an expensive fix, but it has to happen, and we'll, we'll get there. And then the third thing, and this is kind of interesting, the Shaheilis Tribe has been talking to TCOM about moving over from Grays Harbor County to our system for dispatch. That contract was finalized, and we signed it at that meeting. So the Shaheilis Tribe will now be on Thurston County's network for radios and for all of that, so. That is my report.
Interesting, yeah. Councilmember Hearn?
So a question on the Shaheilis Tribe coming back. Is that an unfunded mandate? I assume not.
So there'll be no cost to the taxpayers of Thurston County? They will pick up all of the costs involved in them being on our system, including, and we actually had written into the contract that when we eventually do move radio systems, they will pick up the cost for all of their radios, even though when we do it, we'll be, the TCOM would be picking up the cost for the radios in all of our jurisdictions, they will pay for their own radios. So there'll be no cost to the taxpayer.
Excellent. It's good that they can afford to do that and make that happen. Okay. Oh, my report. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, it's a fund committee where we meet a few times a year, several times a year. And we have the privilege of receiving applications and dedicating funds to community applications from funds that are received generally from outside the community because they're gleaned off of the hotel bed night tax, stay tax on the hotels. So it's great to see the applications that come in, and we hope to see more of great community organizations that are looking for that support. And ALTAC will be reconvening again in a couple weeks.
I actually have a question for you on this. Last year, there was several large allocations that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommended and was approved by the council but didn't happen for one reason or another this year. So there's extra funds out there. There was some talk about maybe reallocating some of those funds. What was the final decision from Lodging Tax Advisory Committee? Are you just holding over that money and gonna, for the next year, or what's going to happen there?
Well, the committee decided that it would be out of order to... Well, the committee decided that it would be out of order to step into a redistribution of those funds, so they go into the pool for next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, I'm not done.
You're not done?
Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking, you heard the esteemed Rose speak tonight about the upcoming training events. I encourage those to look at Thurston County Against Trafficking, TCAT, linked to the city website as well, for dates and places for those training opportunities. At our meeting tonight, we discussed agenda for next year and are concluding that the events of last year are such a, were such a great success that will continue with that success with the Community Conversations event this year. We'll decide soon what, what the conversation is going to be on this year, and then the 5K run. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no meeting for Lacey South Sound Chamber of Commerce, but I want to briefly, well, give a brief on the Lacey South Sound Chambers Barbecue Festival that happened on the 7th of July. In, in a nutshell, it's doubled from last year, which is great news for community and the, and the chamber, which I'm also, serve as a board member. But some, some of the details are, there was 26 competitors, which myself and my buddy Reno were one of them. We, we enjoyed staying up for 30 hours, smoking and barbecuing, and then busy the whole entire next day, you know, setting up and breaking down and doing all that stuff. But it was great. There were 75 non-food vendors and 11 food vendors like Telgate Barbecue and other places like that. So essentially, the booths raised five grand last year, and they more than doubled it this year. Facebook had 2,000 followers this year, they had 6,000, so they tripled their following on Facebook. And the Beer Garden doubled its sales from 3,000 to 7,000. So I know, I was busy serving samples the whole entire day without a break. It seemed like 100 people were in line, and everybody had a smile on their face, and you know, it goes back to that whole swelling of pride in our community when people get out and just enjoy our great parks and the wonderful city and, and all that we offer and, and that stuff. So even though there wasn't a report, those, you know, I had a touch base on that. Other than that, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, they met July 11th, from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Public, Thurston County Public Works Campus. We were briefed on the China Sword situation that I've been talking about the last couple meetings. It has gotten worse. So China is no longer accepting anything. They went from, we, we send 60% of our recycles there to China, and from the beginning of the year, they've accepted zero. So a representative from Pioneer Recycling Services, a guy named Dave Clons, I hope I pronounced that right, he gave a briefing on the whole situation, because it, the, the supply doesn't end, you know, it doesn't end because China is not taking anymore. They keep getting truckloads every single day, tons and tons of it. And to make matters worse, if, there's only like three, three places that we, on the west coast, because China's closer on the west coast than the east coast, east coast sends stuff more to Europe and other places. But places that we can sell stuff to have even more stringent requirements, they're, they're requiring, say, like the mixed paper to be less than 0.05% of contaminants. So essentially, as soon as it goes in the paper recycling bin, it's contaminated to the point where they can't be accepted. And so it's just another way of saying, we're not going to take it and make an excuse for it, or whatever. But other than that, that's about it. They...
So what's happening right now with all those recycles? Is it just being thrown in the?
What's happening to it?
They're, they're trying to find other places to sell it to, but a lot of it, like the councilmember Hearn just suggested, that some of it finds its way to the...
Landfill.
Landfill. A lot, a lot of it is, you know, when it's overcontaminated, his, his biggest complaint, and this is a private sector, was plastic bags. Everything, they find plastic bags in paper, they find it in the plastic, they find it in the glass, they find it in, you know, the, in the landfills, in the mining of the ash from Spokane, they find the plastic bags, and oddly enough, they don't burn in the, in the incinerator. Not all of them anyways. But they're a huge advocate for a statewide ban because it jams up their equipment, and you know, people have to separate the contaminants out of there, and it's, this causes for major delays, and you know, it's, it seems like a very challenging time for the recycling industry, but I, you know, being a private sector, board member for the chamber, and also on the Community Action Council, where Carolyn sits for our, our council, private sector finds answers for a lot of these problems, you know. So if China's not accepting stuff, or whoever out there isn't, then industry, private industry finds a way, and because there's money to be made, you know. So other than that, it's not great news. They're managing, but you know, that is my report.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Cox.
All righty. As, as Councilmember Sebmond mentioned, the Community Action Council met on June 27th. And we spent a lot of time on homelessness, but looking at it from a different perspective, and that is homeless prevention. It's a model called foundational community supports programs, and it deals with, both with supportive housing as well as supportive employment. And examples of that might be, you know, housing assessments, identifying housing resources for clients, supporting a person in obtaining a lease, particularly if they've had any challenges in their background that might bounce them out of a credit screening, that sort of thing. Working on landlord relations, crisis management, and then for supportive employment, vocational job-related discovery and assessment, helping people plan to be employed, job placement, coaching, skill building, all, all kinds of things like that. And the idea is that with these supportive services, hopefully, we can head at least some people who may be on the brink of homelessness into a more productive and stable lifestyle. So that was quite an interesting thing. And they have offered to perhaps come and work with our homeless steering committee. They may have some suggestions for the work that we've been thinking about, about, you know, the gaps in service and all. So I hope that they'll be a good resource for us on that. Really interesting meeting last night of the intercity transit authority. The authority board voted to ask staff to prepare a resolution for consideration at our July 18th meeting to put a four tenths of a cent sales tax on the November ballot. We had two reports about the likelihood of citizen support on that. One from our own consultant, there's a, it's called, it's a long-range plan, and they're continuing community outreach through the end of July. But so far, they've had about 900 responses, and about 70% said they would support a sales tax for transit. We also had a report from Stuart Elway, who you remember just did a report recently for us, and he did a telephone survey of 405 adults. And bottom line is that 60, when, when given the prospect of, is it worth it to you to pay $2 to $5 a month in sales taxes to support transit? Is it worth it to you? They got a 67% yes on that. So it, it looks, looks very promising for that to happen. But I thought that, that is a really different take than what we heard about people supporting parks. And, you know, yay parks, yes, we'll, we'll maintain them, yes, we'll develop them, 124 a month, oh, maybe not so much. So I think that gives us something as a council to think about as well on that. And maybe in a work session, Stuart had some really good things to say about a model for looking at this sort of thing in terms of what is the problem you're trying to solve from the point of view of the voter-citizen, the solution that's being proposed, and from the citizen's point of view, will it solve the problem as they see it, and then what action you want them to take. So it's, it's a nice model for viewing something like this down the road. Thurston Regional Planning Council met, and we talked about, well, we made some decisions on transportation funding. I think Andy, you, the only change from what was reported at the last meeting for the recommendations is that the council decided to have a little bit, keep a little less money back and go ahead and fund a fourth dial lift for, yeah, for intercity transit, which was very welcomed. Everybody was very happy at, at that meeting last night. And then finally, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing met tonight, and we, right before this meeting, and we're, we're continuing conversations about coordinated funding, but there were a couple of interesting things I wanted to share. The Olympia City Council will vote at its next meeting on a resolution to declare homelessness a public health crisis from homelessness in Olympia. And one of the reasons for doing this is that it helps cut through some of the bureaucratic red tape in processing, and it's a model that Tacoma actually developed. Let's see. We found out that both the Salvation Army and the Union Gospel Mission are closing temporarily to remodel, so that's going to be a little bit of a, a gap. And Olympia is really ramping up its efforts and is hoping to involve us a little bit as well, Olympia, Tumwater, Lacey. They're writing a homeless response plan that's based on the Everett model, and this would involve lots of community engagement and addressing, and addressing housing, but bringing a lot of community resources to the table. It's greatly understood that government can't solve this, that we would quickly run out of money to do that. So they're looking at a great, an enhanced working together in partnership. So we may be asked to contribute to that, but we would certainly get a return on our investment. There will be more to come on that. So those are the highlights. There's a lot more detail if anybody wants to talk in private afterwards.
Great. Councilmember?
So the Union Gospel Mission and Salvation Army, they serve a significant need, they're going to be temporarily closed. Did they mention any temporary, temporary solution at all?
I think the Union Gospel Mission will continue its meal service, but both facilities are going to be shuttered for a while. I mean, it's not permanent.
Well, thanks for reporting that.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll be curious to reach out and see what their plans are.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's my report.
Great. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Acting City Manager, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Nothing? You sure? Thank you again for a great meeting. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.